Okay, that's page two. We're down with page three.[13.12][13.12](laughter) Okay, number 11 is the request approval to execute a memorandum of understanding with the North Carolina Department of Public Safety Division of Emergency Management for a statewide training exercise to be held in Haywood County February 18th through February 21st, 2019 at no cost to the county. And we have our Training Officer Heather Hunter and our Emergency Services Director Greg Shupin.
Thank you, and I appreciate your kind words from the winter storm Diego response earlier. Thank you so much for that. We've got a fantastic opportunity here. As everyone knows, part of our department's job is we save lives. That's what we do. On a daily basis, however, we're also charged with doing this when a large-scale event or emergency or disaster occurs, when it strikes. Being prepared is our number-one goal. If we think about this ahead of time, we usually make good decisions in our daily lives, but also in our job, in our profession. We've been given an opportunity for a no-cost grant to host a statewide incident management course here, right here in Haywood County at Lake Junealaska. I want to turn it over to our Captain Training Officer Heather Hunter to tell you some of those details.
So each year, North Carolina hosts an Incident Management Academy, and each year they choose somewhere different to do that. And this year, they seek to host it here in Haywood County. Around 100 responders would be here from throughout North Carolina, and they would be staying at the terrace at Lake Junealaska. This is chosen during the month of February because it is actually a slow month for the terrace, so this actually keeps people employed. Will bring money into the economy here as well. It's a $45,000 grant that will cover the training exercise 100%. That includes the motel rooms, a third-party person to come in and do the planning for the drill so that it is truly unknown before we start it, so someone else will plan it for us. It also pays for all the equipment and training aids. Anything that we do not use will be deobligated back to North Carolina Emergency Management so that they can redistribute that money for other events throughout the year. So it is no cost to us whatsoever. And it is for just the management side to also kind of clear that up. We're not bringing responders in to put boots on the ground out in the field. It's an incident management training exercise, which means we're training to manage the incident. So the incident will actually take place at the terrace as well. And the exercise that we're wanting to do this year is going to be a wildland fire, so it'll bring together local, state, and federal resources to practice.
Anyone have any questions? I know Lake Junealaska is going to house several people during this, so that'll really help them during the wintertime when there's not a lot of tourism going on. It'll be kind of like tourism from the emergency management being so.
I like it. No cost to us and bringing money in.
That's right. This is kind of economic development matter as well. And I think this... Who applied for this grant? Who made application for the grant?
We are able to get these grants each year. It just depends on where they're wanting to host the exercise for the year, and we are able to apply for emergency management.
Well, that's excellent. And in the aftermath of what happened in Gatlinburg, it's certainly a meritorious issue to discuss because we could very well have that same issue here and to avoid deaths and damage to real property and what you've seen out west. So hopefully it'll work out well. I think it's a win-win.
Okay, any other comments? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve to execute a memorandum of understanding with the North Carolina Department of Public Safety Division of Emergency Management for a statewide training exercise to be held in Haywood County February 18th through 21st, 2019 at no cost to the county. And I'll entertain that motion at this time.
Time moved.
Second. Okay. All in favor? Any one opposed? Okay, that's unanimous.
I would like to say something, Greg. If you could find out what they're planning on doing in two years from now, it would be really good to know since the wildfires hit two years ago and the state's always late.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Okay. Okay, then we have a budget amendment, a request approval of budget amendment from the General Fund for Public Safety Emergency Management for $45,000. North Carolina grant funding from the Department of Public Safety for the statewide training exercise. Julie.
This type of grant is a reimbursable grant. We're going to be expending the money first and then sending in for reimbursement, so we need to put this in the budget. So we have put in the Emergency Management Department Professional Services for $8,000 and Travel for $37,000 to equal the $45,000 with grant funding as the revenue source to cover it.
Okay, so can I only entertain a motion to approve the budget request for this $45,000?
Time moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, anyone opposed? Okay, that's unanimous. Okay, request approval for option for purchase and sale of real property for Landmark Asset Services, Inc. in the amount of $225,000 for the purchase of the historic Haywood County Hospital located at 1230 North Main Street. Program Administrator David Francis.
Good evening, Commissioners. Welcome, Mr. Pless, Mr. Long. Good to have you here. Now, for the new Commissioners, you know, and for the Commissioners that have been sitting here, I'd like to just go back with a little history as well, where we are, to bring everybody up to speed on this. Now, we approved a similar option for the sale of the hospital last year to Landmark as well. In the process that this goes through, we approve an option. Landmark then takes this to the North Carolina Housing Finance for tax credits. So let me explain about what those tax credits are. So back in 1987, under the Reagan administration, federal low-income housing tax credits, or LITEC is another word that you'll hear that these credits are called, now finance virtually all new affordable rental housing being built in the United States now. Housing credit rental properties are privately owned and managed. In exchange for the financing provided through the tax credit, owners agree to keep rents affordable for a period of 15 to 30 years for families and individuals with incomes at or below 60% of the local median income, which is about less than $30,000 for us here in Haywood County. The agency, the North Carolina Finance Agency, operates state's housing credit programs to the staff of the Tax Reform Allocation Committee, which consists of the Secretary of Commerce, State Treasurer, State Budget Officer. The agency prepares an annual plan for allocating the credits, or the Qualified Allocation Plan, or QAP, evaluates the applications for the tax credits and makes recommendations to the committee. The owners are eligible to take the tax credit up to 9% of the qualified cost of the building or rehabilitating the property excluding the land. The tax credit is available each year for 10 years as long as the property continues to operate in compliance with the program and regulations. Generally, the privilege of using the credit is sold to an investor or group investor syndicated, and the proceeds are used to provide equity in a new rental development. So this program is managed by the North Carolina Housing Finance Agency. Last year, we made the same application for this. We made it to the tie-breaking round and lost in the tie-breaking round. We were this close, this close to getting it. We lost in the tie-breaking round. So what we'll do with the option this year is we're working with the town of Waynesville in a partnership with them to designate this project as a redevelopment project. What that redevelopment project does, it puts us into a smaller pool of applicants, where last year we were in a pool of 200 applicants, and out of that 200 applicants, only 30 of those got picked or got an award. And going by this, with the redevelopment project, we go into a pool of, last year it was four, and they award two credits out of this redevelopment project. So we're hopefully that we are increasing our chances by lowering our competition by going into the redevelopment project classification. So if we don't, if we somehow don't make it there in the redevelopment project, we go back into the regular pool but with a higher priority that we did in the redevelopment. That's one of the reasons that, you know, we want to do this again. After we did not receive the credits last year, we went back and reevaluated everything. You know, we set, we brought in a demolition expert and found out the cost to demo the hospital would be between $800,000 to $1.2 million. We sat down, we started a conversation, Mr. Mashburn, the previous interim manager, we started a conversation with the town of Waynesville. Mr. Moorhead, Mr. Boyd and I had a conversation earlier in November, and we come up with a plan with John's help here, it's John Stilner of Landmark. We come up with a plan to use the redevelopment, hopefully to put us in this pool. So what this, you know, will do, again, we'll be able to create over 50 units of affordable housing, you know, turning a, you know, a bad, you know, building into something good. So that's why, you know, encourage, you know, us to, you know, to pursue, you know, pursue this option one more time to see if we can make this work. So the town of Waynesville's on board. They met with the, where did you go this evening? Planning Board, Planning Board, excuse me, the Planning Board. They met with the Planning Board tonight. They approved the redevelopment project as well, too. So we're taking all the necessary steps to, you know, to make this a, you know, a viable project. So...
Okay, so if we tear it down, we're going to spend a million dollars, like some people were suggesting, and that's asbestos removal primarily?
Well, there is, you know, John can speak more about how much of asbestos is in there, but we have an estimate the asbestos cost would be about $300,000 to $400,000. We also talked about, there's three parts of the building. The 1927, which is the very front of the building that faces North Main Street, 1952, then 1956. We talked about how could we chop off, you know, and preserve the 1927 part. And it's just, you know, with the way that the building, the 1927 part is listing, leaning against the 56 part, so we'd almost have to go through there and hand knock out four floors to be able to save the 27 part. So we don't, what's the untold cost of that though now? We know what, you know, what estimated, you know, with the demolition, with a big wrecking ball would come through at, but we don't know what if we're down there and started pecking each brick out at this point. So we think we've done some, you know, pretty good due diligence. The, Mr. Moorhead and Mr. Mashburn both have talked to the school board about, you know, situations of, you know, buildings as we try to move through. You know, we have this building, the school system, I think Mr. Nolte said administrative, you know, building was one of their concerns. There is a lease in this building for the school system until December of 2020. We do not think this, this project will impact there being, you know, necessitated to move out any earlier than that, what the lease would run out in December 31st, 2020. So that's why, this option is for $225,000. Last year, Commissioners, you may remember that we had, you know, part of that was that we were also going to advance a loan to Landmark for $495,000. That, that has went away. That is not on the table anymore. This is a stray sale. Landmark has also taken the environmental liability off the county's hands as part of the project that's built into their numbers about the cleanup of the property, and the liability goes away from the county from having to do anything on that nature. And I said John Stilner with Landmark here if you have any questions with John.
David, I've got a question for you. I don't think I heard you exactly right. You said that this project would not impact the school system's lease for two more years? Is that correct?
Correct.
The 1927 building they're currently in is not going to be affected by this? Or did I misunderstand you?
Correct. No, that's correct, because the credits will be approved in August of 2019, but by the time all the financing and everything gets done...
Their lease will be terminated.
About in 20, we won't start, we would not start the project until, you know, October. Somewhere right in there in 2020. We can start the project on the backside of the building and not on the front side of the building.
School system lease ends in 2020.
I've got one more question for you. Again, we're kind of Johnny-come-lately here on this since we haven't been in office but a couple of weeks, and I have tried to keep up a little bit with this, but the National Historic Registry, you know, we got that designation here a few years ago. It is on the National Historic Building Registry.
Correct.
Does that, is there any stipulations to that? When we applied for that as a county and attained that classification, was there any strings attached as far as what we could or couldn't do with that property?
There's certain strings attached to it, but not, you know, actually if we wanted to demo the building, we just have to notify them that that's what we're going to do with the building. We have to notify them that the change in ownership, that Landmark will be taking that over, and then Landmark can also apply for some historic tax credits as well with that building. But other than that, we don't have our hands tied too much with the designation.
But the building itself has to be preserved because of that designation, or you couldn't take a wrecking ball to it?
The National Listing to Historical Places is a privilege. It's not a requirement of anything or a burden on the communities. So if you wanted to tear it down tomorrow, tear it down. If you wanted to go in and reconstruct it and make it something different and paint it pink and put yellow windows in it, you could do that. Like I said, the listing to the National Register of Historical Places, you have to meet certain criteria to get there, but it is a privilege and not a requirement or a burden on communities for the historical buildings that they have. If they can't find a use for them, obviously you wouldn't want a hazard to a community so that it don't restrict you from doing anything you want to do with it. What it allows developers to do is to, under the National Interiors standards, redevelop the building to those standards which would in turn allow you to qualify for not only federal historic tax credits but state historic tax credits. If you did not want to follow those standards, there's no requirement that says you have to, you just would not qualify for the additional equity which, for this project, is creeping up around $9 million. So between federal and state historic tax credit, it brings in about $2 million worth of equity.
So the project accepts, it's earmarked, you're thinking about spending $9 million? Is that correct?
Yes, sir. Our vision for the project has been since 2016 to do an adaptive reuse for multifamily, one- and two-bedroom units, up to 54. I don't want to lock in the number because we may take it down to 53, but up to 54 units. I think in 2016, we were not quite to $9 million, but with construction prices well over $120,000 a unit, we're there now. We had, just recently on a project that we'd gotten an award on in 2017 when we finally got our construction numbers, which were good numbers for 2017, they were a million dollars short for 2018. So the construction pricing. And from 2016, when we had the Phase One environmental and had the estimate put together on the environmental impact and what it would cost to bait the asbestos lead-based paint, and there's a couple drums and a couple of tanks, we were estimating $360,000, and we're over 400 now for the same scope of work, and it's just come pick it up and take it to a landfill, but everything's went up. So yes, we're up to about $9 million now.
Commissioner Long, before we completed the application with the historic preservation, we made sure that we could still demo it even if we had that designation, because we didn't want to bound our hands or bound, you know, another developer's hands as we proceeded with that. But it was one of those things that some, when we interviewed Landmark and other developers of these type of projects, you know, that historic designation was important to them to be able to receive the additional credits.
Again, forgive me for taking so long, but I guess all these other guys here, they're pretty thoroughly versed with all this, but could you have a figure off the top of your head? I know we're using the 1927 portion, now the school board's using it. And, you know, driving by, that looks like the best constructed part of the whole facility in a way. I mean, it's very attractive. I can see how much architecture was put into that in 1927, but how much are we spending to upkeep? Is there anything else in the wing that runs north and south all the way back? Is there anything going on in there right now that's benefiting the county?
No, sir. The only thing that is going there presently is the Sheriff's Department and other local law enforcement officers have a K-9 training area, but that's all that's going on presently in there.
I got a couple of questions if Tommy's done. In the agreement, I understand you say that it's going to close right about the time the lease for the hospital or for the school system lapses, but in the paperwork, it doesn't say that. In the contract that we're looking to approve on the addendum on the back, it says the closing must take place within 10 business days upon receipt of approval from the North Carolina Housing Finance Agency regarding the tax credits for 2019 funding cycle. That says that if they approve for 2019 in June, in 10 days, we have to close, which means we have to kick them out, which means we have nowhere to put them.
If you go back to on Section C of that, the more likely date is going to be September 15th of 2020?
I understand the more likely date, but it says in here for 2019. If this is awarded, if we're lucky, and you said you got down to the tiebreaker the last time, if this is our year to win the lottery, we didn't win the lottery because now we've got to spend money to put them somewhere else.
Yeah. And so what happens in this process, and John can speak, you know, to that, is that when you get awarded the project, and then at that point in time, you start reaching out to the investors and to the other syndicate folks that who would work on this project, and it takes almost a year to get everything put into place.
It doesn't say that. It says once you're approved. It doesn't say when you start breaking ground or when you do anything. It says when you're approved by North Carolina, which has nothing to do with any of us, if they like the plan and they want us to do it. And nothing would, I would love nothing more than to put this thing to use. This has been one of my big things that has bugged me. I drive by it every day. However, if I'm going to get $225,000 for a building and then turn around and spend a million, million and a half to relocate the school system because we did this prematurely, I'm not that much in favor of doing something with the building.
Right. But then, that's why that first option there, do you think there's...
The...
Hey Dave, Dave, we need to take a break because they're going to change the tape. So we'll take a five-minute break. Okay, Ryan said I could start at any time, so we'll go ahead and start again. Now, we were, let's see, you were...
I think Mark was...
Mark was...
We were just discussing the fact that basically, the way it's written, we would have to do something with the hospital. It says in here that it can close before their lease expires, but it also says in here, we can't do anything as far as the lease is concerned, terminated or otherwise by the contract. It says we can't do that as well.
So we, Mr. Stilner and I, we, you know, reviewed that, talked to Chip Killian as well. So we can just strike through the addendum totally, because in that way, the first closing would not take place until March of 2020. If it does not take place in March of 2020, then the $7,000 payment will be forthcoming from Landmark at that time to extend it further.
We're talking, I can't hear you.
I'm sorry.
So if you took out that timeframe and put it back to March 20th?
2020.
2020, if that still is going to create a problem with the school system?
They're going to honor the lease. Landmark will honor the lease. They're accepting the property as with the lease.
Can the lease be transferred?
Transferred.
It doesn't say, I've read it, it doesn't say that we can give it to anybody else.
It can be subject to the lease unless there's something in there that prohibits that.
Yeah, that, if they do purchase it, they will be subject to the terms of that lease. They will have to honor that lease, especially with this disclosure prior to that. Let me ask you this, why, does this have to be entered into now? I mean, can this...
By, it has to be approved in site control. We have to have site control by the preliminary application of January 18th. Yes, sir. Without site control, we can't submit an application.
Let me ask you this, you know, there's certain criteria. What makes you believe that the criteria this time are more suitable for acceptance than last time?
It's the same criteria. There's been minimal changes to the Qualified Allocation Plan and to the design standards of that plan. The biggest key part of what's different this year than the past two years is we're working with the town to initiate and create a revitalization area and to support the project which will meet the criteria of the Qualified Allocation Plan to meet the criteria of redevelopment project. Under the QAP, you have five or six set-asides. You have metro area that gets 37%, 40% of all tax credits. You have the west, it's 16%. You have the middle, and these are designated by counties, but you have the west, the middle, and east region. You have the metro, which is its own designation. You have rehabilitation of existing units. You have rural development, which rehabilitation gets two projects. The metro, the west, middle region, and east gets projects until they run out of that percentage that they were allocated. And then the rehabilitation, they award two projects under the rehabilitation set aside. Under the rural development 515, they award $750,000. That could be two projects, but that could also be up to four projects. They don't put up how many projects they'll award under the redevelopment set aside, which is another set aside, which is what we're trying to put this project into or qualify for this round. They award two projects per year. Last year in the...
But there's fewer people in the pool of this redevelopment?
Last year, west got 30-plus projects, and they were awarded five or six. The redevelopment pool got four projects, and they were awarded two the year before. They actually had five applications, but they only qualified two applications, so both projects submitted in that set aside got an award. So that set aside, in theory, is less competitive because there's not as many applications going into that set aside. This year, they changed it where a RAD project could qualify as a redevelopment project versus going through the process and through the municipalities and local governments to get it qualified as a redevelopment project, which we had not done in the past.
Are there any criteria of the redevelopment project that are in danger and changing because of other things going on in Waynesville? For example, the loss of a grocery store in a certain area or a pharmacy in a certain area. Is that tied to the redevelopment?
As far as I understand, that has not been publicly advertised as a closure. And the Qualified Allocation Plan publicly announced closures by preliminary application. And I've searched the internet. I've heard tell that this is happening, but it's...
So when does, when is that determined?
January 18th.
Okay. So whatever's in existence on January 18th is what you can utilize for the application?
As the site scoring points. Yes, sir. We're going to the site scoring points and distances to, whether it be Dollar General or whether it be Kim's Pharmacy or a bank close by. Those mile measuring distances, 2017, the 2016 census came out, and Haywood or Waynesville topped that 10,000 in population to 10,054, something like that. So they'll never be considered a small community again unless they lose population. So those measuring distances went from two miles to one mile.
What is the date where they determine whether you get the credits or not? What date is it?
August is the announcement.
Okay. So in August, we're either moving forward or we can terminate this agreement?
Correct.
So we're looking at eight months or so of having it tied up without knowing. If we know, then we know it's going to be developed.
Yes, sir.
And at that point in time, if you say, hey, we didn't get them, then the contract can be terminated.
And our process to hopefully alleviate some concerns is we've got to take the 9% tax credit, which is about $6 million. We've got to take $1.8 or $2 million worth of state and federal historic tax credits, and we've got to go find buyers for them. And so that takes a while because you've got to put together a project portfolio and put it on...
Well, I'm not worried about the closing. If it gets to that point and it's approved, I'm sure you'll find a way to get it closed. I'm not worried about that. What I'm worried about is, you know, the county each month spends about $7,000 on this property, I believe, to maintain it. And so we're going to be spending another $7,000 during that time waiting for this to occur. Since the last time we applied for this, I mean, obviously there's people jockeying for this piece of property, and there's, I mean, you heard mention of it tonight. We've got a library right down the road. There's multiple, there's multiple... There's multiple, there's multiple uses that can be made of that property out there. And so while we're trying to determine what to do, which it takes some time to determine what to do, we're spending $7,000 a month. So what I'm trying to do is close, you know, basically for everybody's information, say, listen, if we sign this contract, we're going to be obligated to pay those seven, continue to pay that $7,000 at least until August. But we will know in August whether this is a viable project or not.
Yes, sir.
And if it's not a viable project in August and don't get the tax credits, then whatever plans we've made, we can move forward with those.
Yes, sir.
But you think you have a better chance because of the collaboration with the town of Waynesville and you're applying under a different?
I do believe under the redevelopment set aside, we stand a better chance.
So how do we go back to the, the obligation with the school system you had brought up, what you were going to do about that?
Well, recognition that school system's been there for 20 plus years or, yeah, I think it's, it's going on almost 30 years. Uh, good stewards of the community. We're like the new kid in school. And so, uh, to do something like that right out the gate would be pretty bad. Uh, we understand the situation and the school board at the end of the, uh, year 10, if they're not notified, they automatically renew their lease for another 10 years. Uh, there's a lot of legal that goes along with leases and signing this and taking site control. We're accepting this lease, uh, and if we, I don't know what the legal parameters are, but, and I want to sit here and say, we're not going to kick them out, but that don't give you any comfort. It's going to take us to, well, 2017, our awards in 2017, we won three awards, one in Lenore, one in Kinston, one in Virginia, and was announced August 2017. We just closed the last one Friday. So it takes us a long time to get, especially when it's historic, if it's brand new construction and we's cutting down a bunch of trees. Our biggest hurdle is Deaner. Our biggest hurdle with Historics is National Park Service. It takes about six to nine months to get their approvals before you can actually sell that tax credit and move forward and close your property. And as, as a developer, uh, you want to secure the equity or the funds before you secure the property because if something happens, you're a developer with a lot of property and nothing to do with it. Uh, so we, we secure all funds before we actually purchase and take the property on to ensure that we can move forward with the development, which is going to take until sometime between May, if we're, if we get, if we push it and everything falls our way and National Park Service and ship it on time, it would be probably closer to September, uh, before it actually closed. Our, uh, process or our construction process would start in the back, leaving the front leased to, to them until their lease run out at the end of the year. Uh, I, I mean, outside of that, I don't, I don't know what else. They were, we're accepting the lease. They ha, have a lease in place until, uh, uh, 2020. And to, I, I guess we could buy them out of that lease, but the same, the, the, I have to do the same thing once I accept the, this property and purchase this property as you would if you, if the county was to tell them they had to move out before their lease was up. I'd have to find another place. I'd have, I'd have to follow this lease.
So you would assume the lease if we were ahead with this?
And it's part of the option, notification that there is a lease. And if I become owner of the property, it's my, my lease and my responsibility to follow that lease.
Well, if you could modify that with the concerns that are here and take that off, I'd be willing to look at it again at the next meeting because I want to see it written. Because according to what I've read here, it doesn't say that. It says that we can't do anything with them, and if we do, we broke your contract and you don't have to buy our building. That's just how it spells out.
Okay. I, I'm sorry. I didn't read it that way, but.
Is that going to interfere with what you want to do if we do it? When's the next time? When's the next commissioners' meeting?
January 7th.
As far as the dates?
January 7th.
Would it work for that? You, if you had a decision at the next commissioners' meeting and all of this was actually done, that would satisfy what you need in order to get everything in place? Is that correct?
As long as we have site control by the 18th. Yes, sir.
So we've got time to modify it?
Sir.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, or of course you could make a motion to approve it subject to the modification being done. But it has to be, would have to be spelled out to everybody's satisfaction exactly. I'm think, probably it's better just to come, come back the next meeting. But it's always an option to prove it's subject to it being changed as Marcus has just described.
I don't, I, I, if, if there's time to approve it at the next meeting, then, then that's fine. I don't, I don't, um, I think they've got to take it subject to the lease. I'm not concerned about that. And also, the other thing I'm not concerned about is no matter what happens, we're going to have to do something with the school system. I mean, they don't have any money for their own administrative offices. So, I mean, they're going to be coming to us and it's going to be our responsibility to deal with that issue anyway. And I think we've made certain, certain agreements with them in the past. Now, the amount and what it is and what's constructed, I think that's something that we'll all have to discuss. But as far as our responsibility to them, uh, I, I think we're still going to end up with that, no matter whether there's a lease of, you know, this building or not. Um, but if you can approve it next time, because, you know, there are two new commissioners. It's a fairly new issue for them. If we can approve it the first Monday and that is satisfactory to you, uh, and that language can be spelled out to make it more satisfactory to Mark, and I, I think it can, um, I, I would be fine with, with waiting till the next meeting to decide this.
I would too. I don't want to labor, I don't want to labor the point, but I do have a couple of relevant questions for me. I mean, you guys may already know these. You know, I'm looking at this. I'm sorry, sir. I didn't catch your name, but.
John Stilner.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Okay. I, I think I added up like 7.2 million dollars of tax credits. So you're going to try to receive from this and you're going to have 9 million in, in renovation costs. So basically you're going to get the tax credits back necessary to do the renovation. You're guaranteeing 51 affordable housing units. Uh, what are you going to charge? When you say an affordable housing unit, I, I assume, you know, we're targeting people that's maybe at poverty level or, you know, uh, what, what are, what's your company going to charge somebody for one of these apartments?
I'm actually not ready to, or not prepared to answer that. It, it is, let me try. Don't hold me to the numbers. I, I don't think anything's over $700 or $750 a month. They go as little as, uh, 350 depending on the target. This is a income restricted property. So the targeting based on the designation from the state of North Carolina of Haywood County, whether it's, uh, low, modern or high income determines how we target. Do we do 25% to 40% AMI? Do we do 25% to, uh, 30% AMI? And, or do we do 30% to 50% AMI? Here, we're doing, uh, 25% to 40% AMI. Market rate, if you want to look at it as AMI, is about 80%. So you're about half of what you would see a market rate unit being rented for. But the requirement under the agency is it's, it's cheaper rent than what's in the market, but not everybody can go rent it. It, it, it's held to a income cap, and that's how section 42 tax code works. So we, we have 25% of the properties going to be 40% AMI, and then the other 75% is going to be at 60% AMI, which is just a little bit below, uh, uh, market rate. Uh, when I was talking to the Western Regional VASH, uh, uh, director, and I, I apologize, his name slips me. He was talking about converting Buckme County, uh, uh, VASH vouchers to Haywood County because he can take his voucher and the rent that we're charging his voucher covers for veterans so that he can move veterans out of Buckme County and bring them to Haywood County because, hey, you can't find anything in Buckme. Uh, but I can get back with you on exactly what rents we're charging, but I, I don't have them right now. They're going to be somewhere between 350 for a one bedroom to 650 for a one bedroom, and then a two bedroom be a little bit more.
Now, these occupants, they will be paying that themselves.
Oh, yes, sir.
Is there any subsidies coming from affordable housing or mountain projects or anything to add on to the cost of that room?
Well, I'm, I'm hoping to get 20 plus, you know, I'm hoping to bring some VASH vouchers in. Uh, but I can't, I can't speak to, that's going to happen, just like I can't speak to that question because I don't know. We're not doing project based vouchers. We're not bringing in section eight, and we're not getting that kind of assistance. This is, uh, uh, more of workforce housing. If you don't pay your rent, you can't live there. And i, if you want somebody else to pay your rent, that's up to you.
Yeah.
So we're going to set our rents and, you know, they're, they're, uh, it, it, it's done, done through HUD as far as how they set the income limits. That, that's a, it's, that's controlled, uh, governably under HUD. So each year, those go up and down a little bit, and we'll change with it over the next 30 years. And, uh, and in the past, th, th, this is a property that we don't plan on making market rate 30 years from now. We get you to sell it to us real cheap and, you know, we do this now. And, but 30 years from now, we double the rent and we take it to market rate and we kick everybody. That's, uh, we, we plan on keeping this affordable in this community for as long as that building stands or as long as we're, we're a part of it. So if that makes any, any difference whatsoever.
Yeah, I'm, I'm on the Affordable Housing Task Force, and there's an extreme shortage in affordable housing. Um, and even section eight housing, for instance, there's 600 people who are on a waiting list. In the waiting list, they don't even take a waiting list anymore. I, I don't know if they opened it back up yet or not. But they can't find housing for these folks because there's nothing reasonable, reasonably priced for them. And so the Affordable Housing Task Force is, I think that, I want to say there was like, there was several thousand, uh, units needed that we don't have. And this was just a very small piece of the puzzle, uh, of trying to get some affordable housing in the county. So, um, you know, not everybody can live up on top of a mountain and have millions of dollars. But, you know, we, uh, but we've got to try to find workforce housing for our people that work, our teachers, our policemen, our firefighters, and, uh, and just people that work, uh, you know, just, just a normal job, a living wage in the county. Uh, people that make those can't find housing. So this is just a small piece of the puzzle for it. And, and hopefully, I guess, you know, in veterans, I guess you're, you're catering it towards those too to try to get.
In the design of, uh, a, a large amount of one bedroom units, and our one bedroom units being between 670 and 850 square feet. I think we have 30, I want to say 30 is what, what's planned, and then 24, uh, two bedrooms. But, but we're, we're, we're putting a large amount of, a large number of one bedrooms in a family project so that we are targeting demographics in a different way than a typical family project that has 10 or 15% ones, 50 to 60% twos, and the wet rest threes is kind of how they break down. We're trying to, we, we, there's a huge elderly need here. There's a huge need for small families, and there's a need for veterans. We're, we're trying to take one project because it's been so many years since North Carolina has awarded tax credits to the county for a project. But we're trying to take one project and, and get the most bang for our buck and cover as many people as we can for this first project. And then come back and hopefully they'll change the legislation on bonds and take the 4% credit to a positive 4% credit, and I can come build 400 units. Because new construction under bonds, just they, they don't work right now. Historical properties and bonds work, but, uh, we've, we've looked through the building stock and, and there's just not a big enough building here in the community to put 150 units in, or we would, would try to do a bond deal on that and, and impact the shortage of housing here, uh, it, better than what we're doing with 40, 54 units. But with those 54 units, we're trying to reach a, a broad demographic and give a little bit to everybody, if that makes any sense.
Uh, well, so items 13 to 14, we want to put those off to the next meeting? Is, is that okay with everybody? Do I need a vote for that or, no, no, we'll just? And that's okay?
Yeah.
Okay. I think it would be good because I know Mark and Tommy have a lot of questions and questions you're asking, we already know.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry for everybody.
It's a big project and I just know we've had the hospital for sale for seven years and it hasn't sold. This is, this is, this is the way that we can sell it. And if we don't sell it, if we don't do it this way, then we're going to have to find somebody to, uh, to develop it somehow. I'm not sure how that's going to work out for us, so, uh, but we'll put that off.
Speaking of that point, we had a hotel motel group from Australia that came and looked at it two, three years ago. Uh, spent considerable time here. And the, at the end of their two days here, uh, looking around and, uh, they toured the hospital, toured Gateway, looked at a couple of other vacant sites. They liked the hospital from the historic side, and their question back to me is, how much will you pay us to take it? Because of all those issues that we've heard from the environmental side of it, you know? So it's, you know, it's a unique property in its own way, you know, so.
What are we spending on? Did you say seven?
About a hundred thousand a year.
It's a hundred a year?
Yeah.
So, yeah, so seven, seven years, that's 700 grand. So a few more years and it'll be a million.
So.
Thank you. We can't afford to keep it. I don't.
You need a motion to lay this on the table the next meeting?
No, I think we can just do that.
Just going to postpone?
Just postpone it.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Our next item is item 15, request approval of lease agreement between John R. and Viola Terrell and Haywood County for the lease of parcel of land located at 1600, 1660, 1675 Lookout Point, Clyde, North Carolina, for placement of three antennas, speaker repeaters, equipment building for use by the Sheriff Health Departments, Towne Waynesville Duke Energy, in the amount of $2,500 annually for a five-year term with one renewal term of five years. And I'll turn that over to our, our county attorney, Chip Killian. And I also want to say, this is, uh, this is on Chambers Mountain, just so everybody knows where it's at. So that's where this is located. And then, did you want to handle 16 also, Chip?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to handle them both together because they all relate to each other.
Okay. And then item 16 is the approval of a lease agreement between Chambers Mountain Towers LLC in Haywood County for a lease of parcel of land located on top of Chambers Mountain for the placement of 10 antennas, repeaters and equipment building for use by the fire EMS, med 8, 9 and 10 departments, in the amount of $2,500 annually for a five-term lease with one renewal term of five years. I'm glad you did.
Mr. Chairman and members, uh, these two sites have been used by various county agencies for many years for antennas and repeaters, and they're, they're, they're sitting on the properties now. What happened was, uh, last year, the two, there was a, a, a death and their two terrels inherited the properties. They decided to divide the properties with one terrel taking the property on the top of the mountain and the other terrel taking the property on the west face of the mountain. The property on the top of the mountain was then conveyed to an LLC called Chambers Mountain LLC. So we, I've been negotiating since July with the two families, actually the grandkids of the two families, to get to these leases. The leases, as it turns out, are identical, but what we wound up was, we had previously one lease for $4,500 and Julie had $4,500 sitting in the coffers already in the budget for this year for the two. But now they've been divided. So they've negotiated with us and asked for $2,500 each per year for a total of five, which will result in a budget amendment of $500 per year. So that money's sitting there. The, the, the lease for last year that was due July 1st has not been paid because we were in negotiation all this time trying to come up with new leases. We now have new leases. They are identical. Their rights away that go up to them. And, uh, except that they're, except that the, they're now $2,500 each instead of a total of $4,500 and two leases instead of one. Other than that, they're pretty much the same as what they were before.
Okay. Okay. So does anybody have any questions about that? Okay. I'll, I'll entertain a motion. I'm not going to read all this again. For items 15 and 16, um, to approve the lease agreement between John R. Terrell and Viola Terrell and Haywood County and Chambers Mountain Towers LLC in Haywood County for the lease on this, these two properties.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Anybody opposed? Okay. And then we have a request of a budget amendment for $500 from contingency to cover the increased amount of new leases for the cell tower properties. Julie Davis.
And, um, since we didn't have the money in the budget, this is actually paid from the general fund. We're having to take the money from contingency. So I've got a budget amendment taking $500 from contingency to bring it up from 45 to 5,000.
Okay. Okay. Do we have, can I have a motion to?
I'm making a motion to make that budget amendment.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. That's approved. That's unanimous. Okay. Okay. Request approval of a reappointment of Pat Caldwell to the Nursing Home Community Advisory Committee for Long-Term Care. Bryant?
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Caldwell has served on this board before. She retired with, uh, Haywood County DSS after 24 years. She worked eight as a supervisor of. She worked eight as a supervisor of adult Medicaid, which included long-term care. She has a desire to put, be part of implementing better long-term care in the county. That's why she's seeking reappointment.
Okay. Is there any questions or comments?
I move that we reappoint Pat Caldwell to the Nursing Home Community Advisory Committee for Long-Term Care.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Okay. Unanimous. Okay. And we want to request an appointment of one county commissioner as a voting delegate at the Legislative Goals Conference on January 11th, 10th and 11th, 2019. And, right?
I really can't add anything. We just need someone to be the voting delegate at that meeting.
Okay. And that is, is where?
It's in Raleigh at the Wake County.
So we need, Bill, Bill Upton used to be our commissioner that, you know, he was retired and, and did this. And so what you do is go down for that, I guess it's a two-day meeting and you're, you would be representing the county to do that, so. Do we have any volunteers? Brandon?
This mandatory, this mandatory, we have to have a representative?
Yeah. It, it is kind of it.
Is that on Thursday and Friday?
Thursday and Friday.
I'm not sure it's mandatory, but we certainly would want to have somebody.
Tommy, I think when you were running, you said that now you had time to do these things.
You know, you're exactly right. You know, I actually ran that, I actually ran this by my wife this evening. I thought you guys would jump on that.
We, I, I'll nominate Tommy to go for us.
I'll do.
Okay. All right.
I can do it.
You're a retired, you're a retired member now.
The only problem, the only problem with sending a rookie down there, they might ought to schedule another day.
They're, they're used to it. They're used to rookies.
And, and we'll, we'll even pay for you to go, Tommy.
Yeah.
Do we need a vote for that, do you think, Chip? Or, no? 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 Okay. I'll make that appointment then, Tommy. Tommy will be our appointment for that then. Okay. Thank you, Tommy, for doing that.
Yes, Tommy.
Yeah.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Tommy.
When you get to the county commissioner, it's just this and then it's a lot of other things.
Kevin, I, I will say that on January the 9th, the chairman are supposed to go to a school to same place. Am I right, Candy?
Was that, was that interfere with that?
It's the day before, the same place, right?
That's true.
Am I right, Ron? I think it was the 9th.
But listen, I've been before. It's a good thing to go to. It really is. You'll enjoy it. I mean, you, you really, if I had, if I didn't have-
It's the 17th and 18th.
A job and my wife have a job and other jobs. I would like to go. I really would like to go.
Just stay down there, we'll get you basketball tickets.
Are you talking about the ethics thing, Tommy? Is that what you were talking about?
Pardon me?
Were you talking about the ethics class we have to go to?
Yeah.
That's the 17th and 18th.
That's 17th. That, that's, that's the 17th in Ashville.
Yeah, that's the week before.
I think the chairman is supposed to go to a class on the 9th. Serious, I'm not joking.
Well, she, yeah, well, she's got me-
I must recommend that board chairman go to that on the 9th.
Oh, do they?
I'll show it to you.
I hadn't heard that one. Okay. Hadn't read that. But I'll go, I guess. Okay. Do we have anything else that we need to?
I don't know.
She wants to take a picture.
She wants a picture, I think.
Okay. Okay. Can I have a motion to go into closed session for a client, attorney-client privilege, which is General Statute 143 318 11A3, Economic Development 143 dash 318 11A4, Personnel 143 318 11A6?
So moved.